Afternoon. It is two o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to this special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Thursday, August 24th, 2023. Like to, I'll, I'll give the invocation and ask Commissioner Tosterson if he'll lead us in the pledge, if you'd stand with us, please. Father, we just thank you for being able to do your business. We thank you for just the privilege of serving the people of Glen County. I ask that you would guide and direct our path. Father, let all that we do be lifted up and glorify your name. Thank you for our first responders. We pray for their safety. Just ask that you go with us now in this meeting, and in your name we pray. Amen.
If you ever want to face the flag and hand on heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
First item on our agenda today is to accept the Board of Education's millage rate as approved by the Board of Education, and Ms. Munson is with us.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having this special call meeting. We are required to wait to adopt our millage rate until the Board of Education adopts theirs, and they did theirs today at noon. So the Board of Commissioners is required by state law to accept the Board of Education's adopted millage rate. So you have to accept it so we can submit it with our entire tax digest package. So the first item is a request that you accept their millage rate.
And Commissioners, we have any discussion?
So if we don't accept it, what happens?
So this question came up before, and I'll let Aaron answer that, but I don't believe we can submit our tax digest to the state without you accepting theirs. So no one could get property tax bills this year.
Ah, okay. No, I, I just brought it up because they refused the land bank and agreeing with the city and the county to help clear all these back taxes so we can get other dilapidated property back on the tax rolls. And I'm not understanding why. But anyway, thank you.
Ms. Munson, oh, you, you, the inflationary portion of the tax digest has been re-
For, for the county, yes, which is item two. The, for the, the Board of Educations, they did not reduce theirs. They did reduce it slightly, but it wasn't enough to meet the rollback rate. So they still had to advertise a property tax increase, have their three public hearings. So this first item is just accepting the Board of Education's section, and theirs was not reduced by the total inflationary portion.
I see.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners accept the Board of Education's millage rate as approved by the Board of Education.
Have a motion by Commissioner Raffoski, a second by Commissioner Finn Dig, any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number two is approval resolution adopting the 2023 millage rates for the Glen County Board of Commissioners, and again, Ms. Munson.
All right. Just trying to see how to make this a little bit bigger so I can see. So I'll just go quickly through our, the county's millage rate and the process for adopting. So the property tax assessor reassesses properties throughout the county during the year, and they finish those reassessments around April. The county's working on our budget process from January through May, and we assess our funding needs, and our revenues and expenditures have to balance. So this year, I was requested, as I have been in the last two years, to make sure that our balance, our budget was able to be balanced with the rollback rate on the property taxes so that we would, what that means is that the inflationary portion of the tax digest, as Commissioner Tostin asked about, is removed. And what that means is if you own a, a home and you do not have the Scarlett Williams exemption, if, if your property is reassessed during the year by the Board of Assessors and the market value goes up and you don't have the homestead exemption from Scarlett Williams, then your taxes would go up. So that's called inflationary portion. You didn't change your home, you didn't build anything onto it, you didn't, you know, do any remodels. It's the same house it was last year. It just went up because the market value went up. So when that happens, that is just due to inflation. So the state law says that if we are going to accept that extra money, that we have to advertise a property tax increase, even though our millage rate isn't being raised, our millage rate stays the same. It is still an increase in the amount of property taxes that we're collecting because people's values went up on their properties if they didn't have the homestead exemption. So this year, as well as the last two years, we have reduced our millage rate to offset for that inflationary portion of the digest. So this year, the, the proposed millage rates for the MNO, which is the general fund, is 3.864. It was 4.119 last year. So you can see over to the right, this is a .255 mill decrease for the, for the county. It comes out to around $2 million reduction in the income that we would take, take from property taxes. So these are the millage rates that are proposed before you today. You have the six districts. MNO, which is general fund, covers all six districts, and then the other funds, EMS, police, capital projects, fire, and sea island are just two specific districts based on the services they receive. The next slide is an example of a property tax. If you had a home with a market value of 200,000, this is the amount of county property tax that you would pay on that with these millage rates. A history of our tax digest over the last forty-sow years. And then this is just an explanation of what those funds cover. So in the MNO, which is the maintenance and operation, or also known as the general fund, that covers all of these different services that are listed under the different functions of public safety, public works, judiciary, and so forth. And then we have special service districts for police, fire, EMS, and sea island police, and then capital projects. So those are our different millage rates, and that's what they pay for. So that's all I have this afternoon. Just going to ask y'all to discuss and ask questions if you have any on the millage rate and, and propose adoption.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Munson. Well, Commissioners, any discussion?
Ms. Munson, could you put that, the screen with the chart on it back up? That, yeah, no, you just passed it.
This one?
Yes, that one. I just have to say how proud I am of, of staff and the tax office and, and, and my fellow commissioners for all the hard work that they have put in. But if you look at those, those last three dots, those four dots that, you know, we have lowered the millage rate. This will be the third year we have lowered the millage rate since I've been a commissioner and working with this commission. And I'm so proud of that fact that we were able to do that and keep our values up and, and, and the county stays strong financially. That has been such a, a, a joy to me to, to be able to achieve that. I'm, I'm very, very proud, and thank y'all for your hard work.
Thank you.
And I want to echo what Commissioner Tosterson, because I was thinking to ask you to, to go back to this, but I said, let's go on and approve it. But I'm glad he, he asked you to because to see it and, and to see how low, low we are. And I was just on the, in a training with other commissioners from other parts of the state, and so I was happy to report, you know, that we're probably within, I know, the top five lowest.
We are the second lowest, assuming that no one reduces, everybody's haven't been submitted for 23. But what, with what we know, we will be the second lowest with only one county out of 159 with a lower millage rate than ours.
And, and my other point too was back to the Board of Education, our friends over there. But I, I, I wish that they had joined us completely with, with the lowering of taxes.
Commissioner Booker had my question too, so you've answered that. Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Entertaining a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution adopting the 2023 millage rates for the Glen County Board of Commissioners be approved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Raffoski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Munson. Item number three is to receive a strategic planning update and County Manager Fallon.
All right, good afternoon. Mr. Tripp, can we put up the other slide, please? Just going back to your question that Tamara mentioned, that we, we scrubbed those, the MNO millage rates across the counties, and we're only able to find one other county that had that lower rate. And so chances are that's, that's going to remain the same going into this year. Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, Fannion County, Fannion, yeah.
Yeah.
And they were, they were on a different, they were much lower, but everybody else was, we were significantly lower than most of the others as well. Okay, so going into our strategic plan, I just wanted to clarify, first of all, that this is a strategic plan. This is not the comprehensive plan, and I think there's been a little bit of confusion in some of the articles that I've seen. And so for the strategic plan, this actually covers this year, so 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026, so four years. And that actually coincides with the terms for Commissioner Swett Clark and Chairman Neal, and then also the next two years for the additional commissioners. So we tried to put it into terms where we would actually have a good bulk of the commissioners be present throughout the course of the strategic plan. And so it does a lot for us, but as you recall, we met a couple of months ago, and we have Dr. Malik Watkins here from the Carl Vinson Institute, UGA, that helped us in our retreat and to help us put together some of these things. So for the strategic plan, and I'm going to talk to today, the first thing was the vision and then mission statements. And so these are statements that you came up with. So these, this again is the commission's strategic plan. And so as you can see, the vision statement that we have, which will carry us through 2026, the end of calendar year 2026, Glen County is a welcoming, vibrant, and safe community that fosters a high quality of life for all. And so that, I think, as you remember from that day in June, is what we decided upon would be reflective of the seven commissioners and the people that you represent were elected to represent in the community. So before I go on, is there, anybody have any comments or questions related to the vision statement? Okay, and then mission statement, which, which is a little bit more succinct. And so it's, it typically what you see, and we looked at some other communities around the state and really around the country, and a lot of times you're going to start to see these mission and vision statements can be quite long. In my experience in, in writing strategic plans at the Department of Justice and then the Department of Homeland Security, is to have these mission and vision statements be a little bit more, a little bit more broad and not as long. And really what we want to do is make sure that our staff, everybody across the county can actually know this and, and feel a part of this and, and see where they fit in. So our mission statement that the board was going to approve or settled on back in June was to serve, protect, and develop a sustainable and resilient community. And so that is the new mission statement, as long as the board is good with that. I think, I think we can move on. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to the mission statement? Okay. Values. So we talked, if you remember, we talked quite a bit about what your values were. And so we had a long list of different things that we, that we discussed, but where we settled was for seven values, and there's seven commissioners. So I think that this really reflects a lot of the discussion that we had, both in the retreat back in June and, and previous conversations that I've had with you. and, and previous conversations that I've had with you since I've come into this position. So the values that we have for Glen County, collaboration, that's, that's obvious with our work with the community. In fact, we brought several of the community members into this retreat for their, not only on the business side, but the other government agencies to get some of their thoughts and feedback on what our strategic plan really needed to be. But collaboration is a big part of how we move forward. Positivity as well. Integrity, I think was, is, is one of the core values that we all have. Respect. Accountability was big, and I, and I really like to see this one. I think we've made some considerable strides here in the last couple of years when, when it comes to accountability. Transparency is, is something that we, I believe we do well, but we will continue to try and do as best as possible and really make it, everything that we do a little bit more transparent as well. And then efficiency. So, you know, we talk about how we manage the taxpayers' money, but for me, in some of the things in my discussions with you as well, is, is we really want to be efficient. So we want to be effective, obviously, but we want to be efficient with taxpayer money. All right. And so, sorry. Tripp, you got, there we go. All right. So we have three goals. And so the goals that we came up with, the first one here is to cultivate a culture of service excellence. And so we do have a couple of more goals that I'll get into. But, but this first one, in fact, the way that we, this actually settled nicely based on the current makeup of the staff administration leadership. And so really, this one falls under Tamara Munson. So in her position as both CFO and then chief really of our administration, administrative offices, this is something that in my discussions with all of you, we really want to see some positive changes throughout the, throughout the county. So I will ask Tamara if she would like to talk through any of the objectives that we have. And before she does so, just want to make sure that everybody's clear. These are the goals and then the objectives. So what, you've seen the goals already, but these are the, the objectives that we as staff came up with. And I think it represents a lot of what we have discussed in the past. These are, these are open for comment, open for feedback, and open for editing. But these are just at that objective level. There's gonna be a lot of work that goes on underneath this. So the initiatives really is where we start to define the work that's being done. And I'll talk a little bit more to that in a minute. So Tamara?
All right. So customer service is a passion of mine. I came from the private sector, and, and that was what customer service was all about, you know, meeting that, those expectations, providing that high-quality service, and, you know, making sure that, that you manage money efficiently and, and watching that bottom line. So it's kind of bred into me to provide that good service and, and to do everything we can for both our citizens, businesses, and internal employees. So this is something I'm very passionate about. I'm honored to be able to lead this goal for the entire county team. So under this, we have four objectives. The first one is to develop and implement a system to measure internal and external customer satisfaction. So we've looked at several options and, and developed several initiatives, but a lot of this is gonna be able to be accomplished through these new systems and IT systems that are coming online. So we are moving towards putting all of our processes online so that if someone wants a business license, they can go online, they can submit their paperwork, they can do everything that they need to do with possibly one trip to, to the office and possibly no trips to the office, depending on if they have everything that they need, and pay online and move forward. So there's lots of processes, both through community development, finance, customer service, public works, and all these systems are being implemented. So we're going to be able to take all of that data and get feedback from our customers. So we are going to some, you know, develop some surveys, develop some calling out and getting some feedback from, from those types of services. And then we'll also do feedback internally. So if you are an internal service department and you just work with employees and, and that is, you know, HR, IT, finance, the fleet, some of those areas, there will be opportunities for employees that deal with those departments to give us feedback, to say, this is what worked well, this is what didn't work well, these are some of the problems that I had and, and how we can make it better. So we want to make things better and more efficient. The second goal is to establish employee advancement, recognition, training, hiring, and retention programs to develop and retain high-quality employees. So this goes very nicely along with several of the steps that we've recently taken in the last two years. The three-legged stool, I've heard it mentioned several times, where we redid our pay plan and provided, you know, some raises. That was, that was step one of, of our process. Step two was a rewrite of our personnel policy. And then we did a reorganization very recently. So all of those play into this, but we want to further that by establishing some better career advancement tracks. We've added tuition reimbursement back to our budget this year for our employees to help them develop into, you know, stronger future leaders of Glen County. And we want to, you know, hire and retain the, the best and the high-quality employees that are, that are doing the, the great things for our citizens. The third goal we have is to increase access to online applications, data, reports, and payment methods to increase transparency and improve efficiencies in the citizen experience. So again, this is gonna come a lot with our new IT systems that we're, that we've recently adopted and started implementing. And then the fourth and final goal is to develop internal and external communication guidelines and standards so that we are consistent across the board and that we have a consistent brand and, and a consistent message from all employees. So those are, those are mine, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but just a brief overview.
Just one comment. And first, I, I thought this retreat was probably one of the best that I've had over the now eleven years I've been on the commission. It was very interactive and, I guess, real, as the young people say. And so I'm, I'm happy to see these goals and these objectives. One thing I would want us to keep in mind with all the new technology and is somehow keeping a, a human touch to the customers, our residents, and each other within departments. I think the county manager's chili cook-off is a, is a good way to do that. But those things, so that we are, just make sure that we, we remind ourselves that we are real people and, and we serve real people with all that technology.
I agree with you. And, and we definitely do want to do those outreach calls and, and make those personal contacts. And, and we will not lose that personal contact. It'll just provide more efficiency for, for citizens to be able to apply for things rather than having to fill out multiple forms and things like that.
I have a question. Do we typically have one or two representatives on the leaders, in leadership Glen every year?
We do. The last year, we had three, and we have three that were just accepted this week. So we have, we have three more that will be representing the county. It's Dewayne Pollak, our HR director, Resident Talbert, our procurement officer, and Robbie Jump, Major Jump from the sheriff's office.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Tamara. And as you can see, the, really the focus is on some of that technological, technological change that we need to implement. But really, it comes down to that customer service on the, to make things a little bit easier for people to do business with the county. But Commissioner Booker, great point in that, you know, part of this really is to, to develop our, our folks, to, we really want to build that bench for, for tomorrow so that when I'm gone and all the people behind me are gone, we're actually able to have those people that can step up and fill those roles. The next one, and Chief Ebner is not here, so I'll fill in. So the next one really was focused on, on public safety. And if you recall, in our conversations, a lot had to do with, with public safety, certainly on the police-fire side, but also on that emergency preparedness based on the, the storms that we see here and some of the other emergency, emergencies we've had, particularly in the last, last about 10 months with a couple of fires that we had. So as you can see from these, and I'm not gonna read them all, but really the focus is to kind of get out there for, to, to engage with the community, right? And so that we want to make sure that we continue to promote public safety, but really have that engagement is the key word there with the community. And then recruiting and retention. So we want to hire the right people, we want to train them, and then we want to keep them. So that's really the, the focus of the second objective. And then we want to work together. So we, again, that collaboration piece. So we want to partner. When it comes to public safety, we do have to partner with everybody else. And that's really the focus that we have here, is to focus with those other agencies that are out there and with businesses and with the public, just to make our, our preparedness and our response that much better. And then the fourth one really came down to, this was Chief DeChristopher Follows that he wanted to see in there. And this, when we talked, and Tamara mentioned a little bit about the, the one thing that's gonna be good about this, particularly with the initiatives, is that we can start to measure, and we can start to have some of those performance standards that you have been asking for. And so this one, with the, with the fire service in particular, they have all kinds of standards that they have to meet, response times, things along those natures. So that's gonna be captured within the fourth objective. And then we really want to do a better job of messaging and be able to, and when we talk about engaging with the community, we want to be able to really have that information flow a little bit more accurate, a little bit more accessible, and then also have it come, return the other way so that we can hear some of that feedback from the public. So that's, that's the, the second goal. The third goal is to develop a connected community where families live, work, and play. And this one just so happened to fall under Assistant County Manager John Gentry's purview. And so some of these things that you see in the objectives here are for, related to his departments. And I'll ask him to come up if he wants to give just a couple of minutes on some of the highlights from his objectives.
And Mr. Gentry, before you start, I think it's important to point out Chief Ebner is in training this week and couldn't make this meeting because of the ongoing training that he's going through. I think he completes this evening sometime. So, thank you.
We trust he'll be a good, strong graduate, undergraduate, and representing Glen County as well. Commissioner, thank, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about goal three. And I do believe, as you develop this particular goal for our community, that you have, you have really encompassed everything that is associated with our mission, vision, and our values and being a connected community where families live, work, and play. An objective, one, we define this as execute programmed infrastructure initiatives and plan for the future. So it's a combination of, of completing the projects at hand that our citizens have asked us to do in our SPOSS projects, as well as our capital projects, and then plan for our future needs as we look forward. So obviously, some of those will not be completed in this time period ending in December of '26. However, we want to start looking to the future and what those needs are. We define this objective that will focus on executing current infrastructure and programs and planning for the future of Glen to connect our community to neighborhoods, shopping centers, recreation, and, and also add to our evacuation plans to include multipurpose trails, sidewalks, and roundabouts. This objective will also include exploring transportation studies and gateway improvements and projecting the Glen County brand. As we look at objective two, is establish a positive and responsible growth environment. We define this one as housing and economic development-centric. Planning is, is the focus and ways that the government can assist and encourage growth in these respective areas. So we want to be responsible in our growth as we assist those landowners and property owners that want to develop their properties, but while also managing our, our needs in support of that with the infrastructure needs respectively. The third objective that we have is advance a vibrant and accessible recreation and parks, facilities, and programs. We look at this one as being parks and recreation-centric, providing expanded access to our community buildings. And to include our library facilities if required, our parks and recreation programs that also may or may not exist. Recreation and Parks Comprehensive Master Planning falls into this category that focuses on a gap analysis of facilities and programs for the current and future population of Glen County. So I believe you, you've developed a, a good goal for our community. And now as we look to build the initiatives to support each of these three objectives, moving forward, we'll, we'll be able to start seeing some success to meet your intent. So subject to your questions, that's all I have for today. If I might, the, on, on the infrastructure, if you might integrate, and, and you may already have this in, in here. I know you can't put everything up front with us right now. But the green infrastructure going forward is, should be a part of us building this resiliency, because we have all of these toxic waste sites for, on the national priorities list, superfund sites. And if we get hit with something, doesn't have to be a, a fire like we had, they had in Hawaii, but a hurricane, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. Some of these toxic waste sites that we have over 16, beyond the four superfund sites, we don't know what's in them, because they don't have a record of it. They're supposed to be safe. And, but we live here. The folk who are overseeing this stuff, they don't necessarily live here. And so just keep that in mind when we're planning and executing the infrastructure. How can we go green but be resilient in case we, we do have a hurricane or something like that? Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Booker, and when you talk about that in relation to green infrastructure, the, the resiliency piece is, is important, but also sustainable infrastructure. So I think it's a little bit of this education of ourselves also on what is out there, what, what, what is appropriately safe for us to use with regard to these particular sites. Because there, there's a lot of misinformation that is being, that's presented. There's also a lot of good quality information that's out there. So maybe even from a collaborative and communication standpoint, some education opportunities for our community, just so they truly understand what do we do have and how both our, our communities, our businesses, as well as our government are working towards ensuring that we, we've got a safe community to live in. So along with supporting green infrastructure, you're right. So green is also what I call Pat and Charlie, left foot and right foot, being able to go from point A to point B, utilizing alternative means other than always a vehicle as well. So we're looking at a lot of those. And, and I've got a good note about there to look at additional areas that you mentioned. It could be just sidewalks, making it more walkable. Doesn't have to be rocket scientist stuff, bikes. And there's a tool, and I'll get it to you all, that I've worked through one of my community groups in the University of Georgia, a graduate student put together, where you can just put in your, your address, and all of the toxic waste sites near you will pop up with their information. And I'll get it out to you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, John. Okay. So that is, those are the three goals. We talked about the mission, vision, values. I just want to talk a little bit about what, really what to expect and what's next and for all of you and things that we have talked about in the past. So again, these go down to the objective level. So you have goals, objectives, and then we're gonna have initiatives. And like I said, each, each objective here is probably gonna have in the neighborhood of five to six initiatives. And that's actually where the work gets done. And that's gonna define really the things, some of these things we've already done, and some of these things we're already working toward. But we want to be able to make sure that everything that we say we're gonna do, we are gonna do. So execution of this is gonna be key. So too, too often you see strategic plans, they're, they're nice, they're pretty, but then they get, they get printed and then they get put on a shelf and collect dust. We're gonna execute to that. So it's actually a best practice that I was able to bring from the US Marshal Service when I worked there over to FLETCI and the Department of Homeland Security, where we actually met quarterly. And it really was a way for the entire organization to be able to see what was going on across, across the board. But also, it was a way for us to really focus our efforts on But also, it was a way for us to really focus our efforts on things that were important to the agency. So same thing's going to be the case here. These are things that are important to you as commissioners and the people that you represent. And so we want to make sure that we're able to execute toward all of these objectives and goals. So you're going to start to see those initiatives. Staff is working on those, so they have until the end of this month to get those to us, and we'll take a look at those, and I'll, I'll share those with you as well. But then, like I said, we'll, we'll continue to, to execute to, to those initiatives. And one of the things that you're going to see too, so we saw with the comp plan, so there's going to be some of those things from the comp plan are going to be part of the initiatives, as is some of the things from the operating plan that you had for fiscal '24, we're going to see some of that in there. And so I think what you're going to see in the end product, you're going to like. And so we are going to, this is going to be public, so we will have these quarterly meetings where we, where we hold these in a public setting, probably at the library or somewhere, somewhere like that, and just bring the staff in to talk about all the work that they're doing, and what challenges or risks they might have, and how we can help them accomplish some of those initiatives to lead to the positive outcomes of our, of our goals. And so that's kind of, in a nutshell, what the strategic plan is and where we are right now. Again, this is your strategic plan. I would like to, to offer Dr. Watkins a chance just to make a couple of comments since he came down from Savannah to join us, and he's been helping us along the way in the development of the strategic plan. So Dr. Watkins?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you again. You all might remember me as the preacher's kid from our retreat. When I'm not doing that, I serve primarily as one of the major strategic planners for the Carl Vincent Institute of Government. As many of you know, excuse me, the Carl Vincent Institute, based upon the legislature, we serve as the primary trainers and applied researchers for local governments throughout the state of Georgia. And as the commissioner pointed out, for me, I only go to Athens maybe three times a year. I live in Savannah, I really spend all my time out here in the community. Actually, I consider myself a part of your community. Over the years, I've spent so much time down here. So for me, this is just a professional venture. My kids come down here a lot, I brought them down here a lot, I spend a lot of time down here, so for me, I have a personal interest in it. So beyond just, you know, being a part of the community in that way, I serve as really the primary strategic planner for the institute. You know, I do a lot of work with local governments, do a lot of work with state agencies. In the past, I've done a lot of work where the U.S. State Department has sent me into West Africa after a civil war. I actually served as one of the strategic planners for the expansion of the Panama Canal. So I do, this is what I actually do for a living. I really wanted to tell you that the institute, when we brought David down, Mr. Tanner, he's the number two person at the institute, was so impressed with some of the things that you all are doing down here, that he has extended my work and my time to work to support you all, Mr. Fallon, with no extra cost to you. So I'll actually be available to, to you all to support your efforts over the next year as an additional support for your processes. And as Mr. Fallon said, a lot of the times, when I do this type of work, a local government will call me in to take the comp plan, the strategic plan, the master plan, and I'm like, six or seven different plans, and then pull them all together into one plan that actually doesn't have dust on it, where you actually get a chance to actually utilize it and guide your particular activities. And so in this particular dynamic, I will tell you that oftentimes the institute employs me to go somewhere and tell someone they're doing a horrible job, and I actually do really well at that. That's one of my gifts, is giving people bad news. In this particular instance, I will tell you that your previous plan and your previous process was an example of what not to do, because you'd pretty much have to be a savant to even remember anything that was in that particular process. This particular one, we actually use as a best practice and example for other local governments throughout the state on what to do. Just last week, I was talking with a client that I'm working with, I was talking with them about some of the ideas that came about from the interviews with some of your department heads in terms of direction, in terms of commitment to the community, in terms of processes, things of that nature. So we're actually using you all as an example of how local governments throughout the state should start functioning in terms of doing strategic planning, how you make your policies match what's taking place in various communities. It's succinct, it's direct. Mr. Fallon's process that he utilized, when I interviewed many of your department heads, without even informing him and some of the dynamics that were taking place, there was a natural synchronicity that came together, and I think you saw a lot of that take place in the retreat that we worked with. And so the process that you all have been utilizing, what you have thus far, I give it an A+. It's something that we actually want to support more. And actually, Mr. Tanner, when I talked to him a couple of days ago, asked me if there's anything else that the institute can do to further support your efforts moving forward. That's how impressive you all have been. And so I really want to say that we'll be here to continue to support this process. One of the things I really wanted to point out to you, and this is not something that Mr. Fallon and I discussed previously, was that we really like the direction of your goals. You know, they're specific, but they have enough breadth. Like, for instance, many communities throughout our state are dealing with housing issues. You know, I, I live right, really just a short distance away from the new mega site that's taking place with, with, with the High Endite Plant. And so one of the things that's really come about from that is that many organizations or local governments, they want to tackle these large issues, but they don't have the resources, the connections, or even the local technical assistance prowess or capability to address these particular issues. As somebody that does housing research, oftentimes organizations or local governments will jump into this mess, not understanding that the amount of money and the technical capacity it takes to do, to, to engage in these types of activities. And so what I like is that how you've discussed the issue, you've brought it up, but you haven't taken it on as being the sole organization that has to address these particular things, just like workforce development. These things take collaborative dynamics, whether it's affordable housing, workforce housing, whether it's preparing your workforce to deal with global economics and shifting supply chains, all these types of things that you all actually face right here. And you all actually serve as one of the best-kept secrets in the state, considering what is taking place. And I'm saying this not just because this is a professional project, this is what I do. And I always study global economics, supply chains, local economic development, strategic planning processes, things of that nature. So just want to tell you that the way you all have approached this in terms of identifying the issues, but not getting stuck in the mess, you all focusing on the policy issues and allowing the hand to then come in and deal with these particular dynamics, you all are really setting an example of how other local governments can work. So as, as you move along, I'll be here to continue to support you. The institute is here to support you, and you all are really shining a light that provides examples on what is taking place. I will just tell you that I'm probably booked up for the next two years. I only take on projects because of someone who makes more money than me may tell me to go do them. But the fact of the matter is, is that they've also set aside time for me to continue to support what you're doing. So I'm actually excited and look forward to working with you all. I know what you all have been through over the past few decades, and I think it's really bright about what is taking place. And when we start dealing with some of the ACCGs and some of the other groups, you all will actually be promoted as an example of what to do. So thank you for the opportunity to come here, and at this particular phase in my career, to be honest with you, I'm not really looking for many professional accolades. At this point in life, as with many of you, it's about making a difference in people's lives. And I think what you're doing here gives, gives you all an opportunity to actually make that difference. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for, it's been a really good experience, and I'm looking forward to more. Is there any questions or anything I can provide? Got you, sir, thank you.
And want to thank you for coming, thank you for your kind words, and we look forward to continuing.
You all are doing a hell of a job, and I don't, I give people bad news for a living. I don't care, because that's what I'm employed for. So the fact that I can come here and have a good experience and have something good to say, thank you for actually giving me something I can actually go home and relax and now watch a little TV for, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Malik. Commissioners, any questions on the strategic plan? Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, I'm going to use a bill as an example, if you don't know this. I'm using the, the county manager as an example on another board that I serve on, because he came in with a fresh eye on local government, and I think he's been doing a great job at it.
Commissioners, any other comments today? All right, we do have need to go into executive session for a few minutes for the matter of...
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go in the executive session for pending litigation.
Have a motion by Commissioner Folsky, a second by Commissioner Swett, to go into executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, we stand Reese.
Putting this plan together is a huge amount of work and demand on the staff, on top of everything that we put on, on the day-to-day operations of the county. I just want to thank each and every one of y'all, and if you'll pass the word down to the rest of your departments, thank you. I'm excited what we got, and it takes a lot of work. People don't understand how much y'all had to put into to shape this vision for the future, and thank you.
Yeah, to work with seven commissioners, to bring individual visions to the table and be able to coalesce those visions into a concise operating plan, takes a lot of work. And I'll add my thanks to those of the other commissioners. With that said, we are in recess. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to come out of executive session. All in favor? That is unanimous. Business before us.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners settle Anthony Marrows' pending workers' compensation claim in the amount of $90,000.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to settle a workman's comp claim. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any other business to come before us today?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. We stand adjourned.